Good evening. It is Tuesday, March 30th at 6:32. This is the Grotton Town Council Committee of the Whole Special Meeting. All councilors are present with the exception of Councilors Melendez and Zepary, and Councilor Parker will be arriving. Oh, Councilor Melendez is here. Hello, Councilor Melendez. With the exception of Councilors Zepary and Parker will be arriving a little bit later. Let's see, new business. We are on to 2021-2061 Data Center Host Municipality Fee Agreement. And we received this information, and you all have had a chance to read it over. I hope you put some questions together if you have thoughts about it. And we have Attorney Eric Callahan with us here tonight. And how we're going to do this tonight is Mr. Callahan and Mr. Burton will make their presentation. Make note of any questions or comments that you have and hold them until they're done with their presentation. And then at that point, we'll open the floor for council comments and questions. All right. So, Mr. Burton, are you starting, or is Mr. Callahan starting?
We'll go ahead to Eric to have him start going over it.
Thank you very much. You have the floor, sir.
Okay, so this is a host municipality agreement that has been negotiated with the representatives of GOTSPACE data partners LLC. It is it is a requirement of Public Act 21-1, which allows the tax exemptions afforded to qualified data centers in Connecticut. That legislation doesn't spell out what the terms of the host municipality fee agreement require, you know, from an economic standpoint. But in essence, GOTSPACE data partners anticipates that will be either an owner-operator or co-location tenant, as defined in the legislation of qualified data centers located in Grotton. Page one of the draft agreement defines the anticipated parcels where these qualified data centers will be located. On Zero Gold Star Highway, 20 Paulson Road, a few parcels on Zero North Road, and potentially other land contiguous to those properties, or which may be needed off-site for substations, relay stations, or infrastructure. But in essence, whatever GOTSPACE brings to the town's planning and zoning commission in terms of for site plan approval and applies to the DECD for tax exemptions will be the parcels that would ultimately be the subject of this tax exemption agreement. The legislation is effective July 1, 2021. And so until the GOTSPACE applies to the commissioner of DECD for the tax exemptions and satisfies all requirements of the legislation to receive those tax exemptions, these parcels will continue to be taxed in accordance with the town's normal procedures. Once GOTSPACE qualifies for the exemptions, it will pay preliminary payments to Grotton, which will be equal to the amount of the tax assessment which applied to the properties immediately prior to receiving the tax exemptions. Once it receives building permits, those payments will go up to 150% of the the previous tax assessment, which was in effect prior to the exemptions. And then once GOTSPACE receives a certificate of occupancy for a building on any of the parcels, then the agreement allows for a host municipality fee, which is based really on the the electric load that the building is using, plus the the data storage capacity, and it's a sliding scale based measured in megawatts. If it's less than 16 megawatts for a building, then the payment is $500,000. If the amount of megawatts used exceeds 16 megawatts, or 16 megawatts, I'm sorry, up to 32 megawatts, then it's $1 million per building. And if it exceeds 32 megawatts, then it's $1.5 billion per building. And those are annual payments that increase by no less than 2% a year and no more than 3% per year. And there's a cost of living formula that's within the agreement. And at any time when GOTSPACE no longer qualifies for an exemption under the legislation, whether it's by building or the entire parcel, then the exemption goes away as to that building or the parcel of no buildings no longer qualify. And I'm happy to discuss any particulars of this agreement. It would last for 30 years if a qualified investment of at least $400 million is made within five years of the commencement of construction, or 20 years if at least $200 million but less than $400 million is invested within that time period. And there's also provisions which would allow for earlier termination if certain requirements of the agreement are not met.
Could you go over that last paragraph again, please?
Sure. So I was referring to subsection E of this agreement, which is found on page 7. And so the legislation requires what's called a qualified investment to be made with respect to these qualified data centers, and it's for expenditures made after July 1, 2021. Here, it's the way our agreement is written, is they have five years from the commencement of construction to make these investments. And the legislation allows an agreement 20 years if at least $200 million is invested, or up to 30 years if $400 million is invested. So we've written it both ways, where if they invest $400 million, then the agreement with the town is 30 years. If they invest at least $200 million but less than $400 million, then the agreement with the town is only 20 years.
That's right.
20 years.
Thank you.
And then we have built in the ability to terminate sooner if, you know, essentially there's a default under the agreement. So that, you know, they, you know, for instance, if they don't make the qualified investment within that five-year period to qualify for the exemptions, or the DECD terminates its agreement with GOTSPACE, we can terminate our agreement early.
And Eric, just to point out, those are all the, both the five-year length of time in the length of the term, it's all right out of the act that we're required to go by.
That's right. That's correct.
And it's page nine of the packet if you were wanting to read it. Seven of the agreement, but nine if you're going by our packet.
So I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has. But we tried to put together the agreement that captures the essence of the economic terms, attracts the legislation, and I think it's also protective of the town.
Okay, very good. So we're going to go with our normal rules process for tonight. So do councilors have questions or comments for the manager or Mr. Callahan? I trust we've all had a chance to read and collect our thoughts. Councilor Franco, you have the floor.
Thank you. So as I was reading the contract, it had stated in there something about when payment is due. And it seemed as, if I read it correctly, it was due towards the end of a year, not at the beginning. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. The, so there's two types of payments. There's the payments that kind of track the tax assessment before they get their CO, and that's due at the end of each year. And then the I'm just trying to find the section here. And then the host municipality fee, which is in subsection B on page 5 of the agreement, is, it runs from the anniversary date of each CO. So yes, they are they they're about a year out from when the trigger date for that payment occurs.
Okay, so my question is then, let's just, I don't know, towards the end of the 30-year contract, at the end of the 30 years, at the very end, when they're leaving, just let's just say, what's the incentive for them to pay the last payment?
Well, they have a contractual obligation, so we can sue them if if they don't make the payment.
Okay. And if there's other types of defaults that maybe we don't agree upon, but maybe we see as a default, or they see it as a town default, what is, what do we do? Is this just litigation, mediation? Does, how is that going to be handled?
Right now, there's no alternative dispute resolution policy in this agreement, so there's no arbitration. It would be litigation. And and there's a couple of things, you know, the DECD has an agreement with GOTSPACE at the same time we have an agreement with GOTSPACE for the same qualified data centers. So a lot of what GOTSPACE has to do to qualify for these exemptions is in both of those agreements. And so, you know, I guess where I'm going with that is they cross default. So if the DECD thinks they've defaulted, ours terminates and vice versa. If we think that they terminated, DECD's agreement terminates as well. And and I think that the benchmarks for when they are, what they're required to do are pretty clear in this agreement. They're either operating one of these centers or they're not. And we have the ability to do inspections and get information from them to confirm that they're satisfying their obligations.
Okay. And what if the, let's just say, something happens and they're not generating um, I don't even know what it's called, the the rating number to keep the pricing. And they fall below it because maybe there's a maintenance issue, because certain servers are offline, or due to maintenance of some sort, and it takes them a while to repair that. Does that change the amount they're paying on a monthly basis? Or is it because you build a certain size building and this is what it's going to generate, that's what it's based on?
It's based on their it's based on their designed data storage capacity. So the only the only real variable to be there based on the example you gave would be the electricity that they're using, because that electricity they're using can tip the scale of whether it's 16 megawatts or more. And so that would be the only variable.
So if they build a building the right size to do 32 megawatts, and we're supposed to get like a million dollars, correct?
If you get $500,000 for each 16 megawatts.
Or the electricity would likely push the 32 into the next category, because you also add on the electricity. So it would probably be 1.5 million.
So that's what I'm trying to figure out, like if there's an issue, and let's just say they're not drawing as much electricity because they have servers down. Does that change the dollar amount? And can the dollar amount fluctuate per month? Or is it a contractual, like, once you design it and it's built, that's what we're going by regardless of what your maintenance is?
Based on capacity. And like you said, the only thing you might miss out on is, let's say you're 32-megawatt building and the electricity pushes you into that next category for running the place. They shut down, electricity goes down, well, you drop back to that million-dollar category. But if it's part of the year, I'd imagine it's going to be prorated. So they'll have to see what it was over the course of the year and how long that shutdown was.
All right, because I'm just, I didn't know if that was clear in the contract on how that would work out.
Yeah, no matter what, they have to abide by the contract.
All right. I'm just curious if things fluctuate. Okay. And then can you also touch on the bonding?
So my understanding of the bonding is that before any investor is gonna allow GOTSPACE to spend 200 to 400 billion dollars, you're gonna want to make sure the entire project is bonded, so that once a shovel's in the ground, the project gets completed. And the individual we've been dealing with on behalf of GOTSPACE has assured us that it is bonded from start to finish. And we added something into this agreement. It's in section 2 B F. So it's on page four of the agreement itself. And what it says is that upon commencement of the construction, GOTSPACE shall provide documentation to the reasonable satisfaction of Grotton of its anticipated construction schedule for each building to be utilized as a qualified data center and evidence that such construction is bonded to ensure the completion thereof. But we put that in the agreement.
That's good.
All right. And and I just, you know, I'll stop talking, but one quick question here, and then I'll take a break and let somebody else have a chance. But um, and I wanted to, Mr. Burton, you've spoken with Grotton Utilities, and you're confident that they're going to have enough, be able to generate enough electricity for these buildings, at least two buildings, plus all the normal regular utilities, as well as upcoming development?
Yes, I mean, I've been in multiple meetings with both Keith, Ron, and A. L., his staff. And Keith also spoke with, I should say, Mayor Hedrick, also spoke with C-Mac. So everything aligns that there's enough plenty of power. Now, I think it's been mentioned before, there's going to be some upgrades near the data centers. That's all at the cost of the data center people that they're working on with DU. So there, that's, there'll be some other work done.
Okay. I'll let somebody else have a chance to talk. I'll take a break. Councilor Aubrey, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just, the areas where they're anticipating to build, I'm assuming that that's the correct zoning area?
That's, they're all industrial property area, and it's in allowed use there.
Okay. I just wanted to share that I have spoken with Ron, like, I'm sorry, I can't think of his last name, the gentleman that runs Grotton Utilities.
Good day.
Thank you. And he assured me that they have what's needed for the capacity of what's needed for these buildings. His only thing that he mentioned beyond that is as these go up, there may be a call for more power from the supplier. So he said to me, the sooner you get yours in, you're in a better position. As they go forward, they'll have to be requesting more power. So I think it's good that we're moving forward on this and expediting going forward with an agreement. I think right now we just have one ahead of us. Griswold? I haven't heard about anybody else approving.
They're the only ones that have signed so far that I know of.
Yeah. So according to him, that would put us in a very good position. Just wanted to share that. Yields the floor.
Thank you. And I just wanted to note that we have a full complement of councilors now. Councilor Parker joined us at 6:37, and Councilor Zepary joined us at 6:48. So thank you very much for coming out. Mr. Callahan presented, and we are just taking turns with questions and comments now. So are there more questions or comments? Councilor Franco, for your second time.
Thanks. So I did receive a call from Chief of Quantic Bridge today, and we discussed, you know, his thoughts on the matter. And you, Mr. Burton, have had meetings with them as well?
Yes.
And I think he's confident that they'll be able to take care of this, and they might need to expand maybe some staffing. So do you know what, because I'm not an expert in this, and but electrical fires of that magnitude, if they're ever happened, would be, I would think, pretty, pretty serious. From what I'm understanding is there is some kind of fire suppression in the building that would take care of that. They would have to turn the power off at some, you know, at some point to be able to fight the fire then. And is there anything that we should be concerned about over that? Maybe have you had discussions regarding?
No, they're pretty safe, and Chief Driscoll didn't seem to have any real fears of anything. They're closed-loop, you know, internal systems that, you know, should be pretty good.
Okay.
And just to mention, they are only two-story buildings, so they're not going to be like really high, tall buildings.
Okay, that's good to know. Um, and let's just say the developer, so the developer that the person that actually builds the building and runs it is the one who we have a contract with. So if GOTSPACE becomes just the landowner, and he allows a developer to build the buildings and be the database person that runs all that and manages everything, and he's just simply the landowner.
Well, it'll be, they'll be more of a partnership. It'll be like a joint venture. So there'll be a different configuration. I expect they'll still be involved as ownership too. Is it that your understanding, Eric?
Under the legislation, they have to be either an owner-operator or co-location tenant. And so if they can't satisfy us that they're one of those things, and they've got this, you know, multi-million dollar site there, we can terminate the agreement and tax them accordingly. So they have to satisfy us that they qualify and have standing to be party to this host municipality agreement.
And can you explain the difference between a owner-operator and the colo?
Sure. So the owner is someone that either owns fee title to the site or has entered into a lease with that owner for at least 50 years. So the owners really, they either own a title or they have a long-term lease with the owner. An operator is a person that contracts with the owner to have a qualified data center and operate it on that site. And a co-location tenant is a person that contracts with the owner or operator of a qualified data center to use and occupy all or part of that center for at least two years. So this outfit, GOTSPACE, is saying we're going to qualify as one of those three things. This host agreement is a precondition to the state granting the exemptions. And they cannot assign this agreement to anyone other than someone who would qualify as one of those three categories throughout the term of whether it's 20 or 30 years. Whoever has this agreement with the town has to qualify under the act to have one of these agreements, or else we can terminate it.
Okay. And let me just ask, if we terminate and for breach of contract or whatever, do you think the property would still be a data center, and then we would just tax at the regular rate? And what would happen?
For the value of the build, it'd be taxed for the value of the buildings and the personal property.
Right, because from what I'm understanding, a data center couldn't survive paying routine, normal taxes.
And those would be in their interest not to let it default, yes.
Right. So that's what I was trying to sort of get at, to make sure that it's also in their interest to stay within compliance of the contract. Because by being in breach and losing this agreement, this would cost them a lot of money. And probably if that happened, they would most likely probably pack up and leave the area. And that's what I would, I would have to assume. Is that, would you assume that?
I would assume that. I mean, we've never, I've been told, I can't guarantee this, but that no data center has gone bankrupt, whether that's true or not. I've been told it several times. I think it's very, very, very rare if it happens. So they're going to want, you know, if one, some reason something happened left another, it's going to come in there. You have the whole setup. So I don't think that's much of a concern.
Okay. I'm just trying to like ask all these questions.
Oh, yeah, no, I totally agree.
And try and cover bases so that we're making really good decisions for our town. And, you know, and what happens if? And I know some might be far-fetched, but it's, this is new to all of us in our town. So I think people are interested in this, and they're going to be asking a lot of questions after this becomes public, and they're going to want to know answers. So I'm probably up with my five minutes again. So I've spoken twice, and I have to be quiet. Thank you.
Yeah, just to say, we spent a lot of time looking at the details on this, a ton of time. So it's a really well-written contract.
Councilor Boardland, you have the floor.
Thank you. I think it's great, obviously, for an economic development standpoint to bring in something like this that's going to support our community. So I'm definitely in support of the economic growth that it could bring. Looking at the map, I do naturally have concerns that it's next to our watershed. And I know some of the things that I've read from some of the research is the fear of overheating, and there's some cooling systems that can be set in place. A lot of these data centers are typically better adjusted in colder climate areas, which we kind of fall in that line. So that's one of the good things in the location. But it does leave a bit of a carbon footprint from an environmental standpoint that we also have to consider. I know we're not making those decisions today. We're just openly talking about it. So I do have concerns down the road, once the center was no longer operational or became idle. Is there anything in this contract that protects our environmental standpoint as far as maybe? I've seen some contracts where companies would have to remove all of these type of waste products so that we didn't have these hazards sitting on the properties after maybe they decided to fold or sell. So that's my big concern is the climate, the the climate impact. So there is definitely, it says 17% of the total carbon footprint caused by technology is due to data centers. So, you know, it's, it's important to think about. I mean, I think there's a driving number here for dollars and tat for our revenue. But I think I would, I would have to, you know, I have to mention that side of it. And, you know, thinking it from a fire standpoint in the runoff, one is really close to the watershed. And so what security systems are going to be in place to prevent such things? I mean, we, our water is very important in that area. But I also do have concerns about the carbon footprint that it does bring. And when you increase carbon, you increase cancer rates, which we in southeastern Connecticut do have already a high cancer rate. So those are my questions. What type of preventative measures? I understand that this will go to planning and zoning, but it is important that as a government body that we could, in the contract, also write some other things in there to protect ourselves and not have to worry about the hazard materials down the road. So that's my first question. What are our environmental part in this contract that protects us? Because we did just vote, right, that we were going to be looking at climate, be more climate cautious and friendly in our town. So how does this fit into that?
Sure.
And then I have another follow-up question. And then I have another follow-up question.
Okay. You did mention that it's going to have to go through the Planning and Zoning Commission, inland, wetlands, that type of thing. It's in that water protection zone, which means there's actually extra rules and protections in place to ensure nothing happens. The only real, the state went through some of the environmental stuff as they went through the act. The only thing they really had concerns with was the, just the storage of the diesel. Deb Jones looked back at earlier plans that came through the Planning and Zoning Committee, well, go to the Planning Commission likely then. They have required environmental bonds as part of the Planning and Zoning Commission process. So if there's any, any concerns, they could actually require an environmental bond. And the states actually expect they take up a second act, they're going to put some other environmental restrictions in place for data centers. That'll apply at any point, point it goes, if it does go forward. We did talk a little bit about the environmental bond type thing, when they understand they might have to do one through the Planning and Zoning Commission. However, they were unwilling to do one in this agreement until they see, they'll go with whatever the state says and whatever the Planning and Zoning Commission says. And just to mention, this is industrial property, this is about the best thing we could have on industrial property. The, because you don't have a ton of employees, there's a much smaller footprint there for the parking lots. So it's, you know, some of our last industrial land and it's a great, about as clean a use as we can have on site there.
Great, absolutely. I guess it's just, you know, anytime, you know, keep in mind when you increase that amount of energy that you're using, cancer rates do go up. Energy consumption and carbon footprints are back into our climate and it's close to our watershed. So I just, you know, I do see that as a concern. Also, my other question-
Your, your time is up for your first round.
That's interesting, because-
But we can come back and I pause it when you're not speaking.
Sure, thank you.
You're welcome. Are there other councilors who wish to speak?
I wanted to, I wanted to ask a couple of questions, please. The, the host agreement that was negotiated is the same host agreement that any municipalities in the state of Connecticut will be using, is that correct?
No, because there's no requirement from the state themselves. If you're working with the same developer, they're going to all be the same, because they're going to bring in companies to look and they want all the same key points at every municipality, to me the same payments, same everything. They won't deviate from that. Anybody that deviates will just not go forward. Now that, like I've said before, the minutia is going to change. My understanding is Griswold took basically the first version of the contract, which is fine, it was a fine contract, but we drastically changed it and Eric spent a ton of time going through it to make sure it was locked solid for what our needs are.
Okay, so whoever is dealing with the same company that we are, the Scott Space Company, they're in for the same host agreement that we've negotiated.
Griswold, Griswold went up to meet what we had negotiated, yes.
Okay, thank you. The second thing was going to, some of the items that the prior council was speaking of, Council Boardland was concerned about some environmental issues. And I, I am also, I understand you're saying it's going to go through the land use commissions or the land use agencies for approvals. It's heartening to know that the state is looking at perhaps a further restriction as far as bonding in case of that. Do I remember correctly that they use the PFAS for the fire suppression at the data centers?
That's not known yet. I actually was talking to Mr. Quinn about it. Until it gets designed, there's apparently, there's different options on the system. So they don't know that yet and that would be part of what they'll have to present to the Planning Commission.
So before they go to the land use agencies, they will have to have decided what fire suppression system they'll be using. So that our land use agencies will know full well what they're going to be coming in with and what the potential hazards are.
That's my understanding. And then, of course, also with the building process, Eric, what are your thoughts on, at what point would the Planning Commission and the building departments and all of them know about the actual systems being in place, you know?
Yeah, I don't know. I, I, I can't speak. I think that would probably be better to ask that question too. But it would be, I think would come off as part of the whole application process.
Can, Mr. Bird, would you be able to find that out before we vote on?
Oh yeah, definitely.
Six, please. And then the logical follow-up to that would be then, I'm assuming our fire departments will understand how to deal with these things. It's nothing that unusual that they haven't dealt with, so they have the proper training for this, I would assume. But that's, my concern is they, because of the, the water area that we are in, that there might be an issue with that. And then the last thing I have is the, the issue with the parking areas. And I'm assuming, again, our land use agency will take care of the roof runoff, the parking areas and collect all the stuff that's not really, you know, normally found in that area and collect it in some way and process it in some way so that it doesn't go directly into the aquifer.
Deb Jones just texted me, she's watching. She said, also to remind people, Grattan Utilities will be also very involved with how things are set up there and laid out. She said, Planning and Zoning Commission would always ask that, would always want to know about the PFAS. And then they could take that in, into consideration.
Thank you very much. Are there other councilors who wish to speak? So we have Council Obray and Council Boardland who would like to speak for their second time. So we'll go Council Obray and then we'll go Council Boardland. Council Obray, you have the-
Yeah, I could, I just wanted to say that I think John and Attorney Callahan have done an excellent job. I know they've added to the contract and they put in some provisions where we can actually make a little bit more off it as it grows and I think they've just done an outstanding job. I want to thank them for that.
And just to mention, Deb did say there will be very strict stormwater standards. I should have just invited her.
Thanks for listening, Ms. Jones. Council Obray, do you have more to say or you said?
I yield the floor.
Yield the floor, thank you very much. So we'll go back to Council Boardland for your second time. You have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. So again, from the environmental standpoint, the PFAB was the next thing I was going on. I'm looking, I saw some other considerations. There are environmentally friendly ways that data centers could cut down on their carbon waste if they chose to and incorporate different mechanisms and protocols. But once again, I don't see that in this particular contract. I'm not sure if this particular company is going to do such. Even with the water storage drain system in place with an extensive one, if an emergency overheating thing could happen, we have to look outside the box. The number one thing of hazards on here is the carbon, carbon footprint fire. And then it could breach some of those toxins that could run downstream right into our watershed. Because unfortunately, these, these sites are not too far from there. So once again, there could be other protections that this town could choose to do to enhance on top of the extensive drainage and stormwater that we could do to make sure that our, our drinking water is protected. Also, from, i- if this was to change hands, do we have to come back for another contract? So if this owner decides to sell, say, at year 15, where do we stand?
If it's a valid owner switch, then I believe we're just notified. Is that correct, Eric?
That's right.
Right. And then just touching back on the PFAS thing you just brought up. As I mentioned, the state's looking at, at the, we already discussed some of those things. They don't know the, the potential property and it doesn't know what they would use. But until the state does their thing, we're not going to get something else in our agreement. And honestly, that's why we have our land use agencies, is to make sure those safety mechanisms are involved. That's that process.
Right, okay. So that's my, my thing is, is sometimes, you know, the tax incentives are wonderful, companies come in and then they pull out or they change hands and aren't able to abide by the contract. So, I mean, if you think that this contract is going to support that, that is great. Is there anything, John, that we can do on top of what the state's going to revise as far as an environmental standpoint of requirements that we'd like to see?
We're not experts on it. Honestly, the, the other agencies we have underneath us are much better. They're situated for that. And like I said, that will apply to all data centers, so, you know, we have to see how that process goes.
So as of now, we are, we're not in the wheelhouse to be able to make a modification to our document to do so. Okay, well, I think that answers my questions. I think, you know, from the environmental point, I just still have more questions and it, there are some ways that different areas have had them put in and they had higher standards where they made sure certain protections were in place. So, but thank you.
Looking to see if there are any other councilors who wish to speak. Did we lose somebody? Nope, we got everybody, okay. Any councilors who haven't spoken yet wish to speak up and voice any comments or concerns?
And you can also, if you have any questions later through reading it again or something pops in your mind, just email me and we'll send it back out to everybody.
Great. Councilor Heed.
Oh, yes. John, would you happen to have an estimate for how many jobs they might generate in the, the building of these facilities and in the manning?
As I said, you know, there'll be a lot of construction jobs and the, the equipment has to be on a three-year cycle and actually break that up into thirds. You're going to have a lot of ongoing construction and installation type jobs, ongoing. About six, they've averaged about 60 employees, high, well-paid employees per building. That's typically, it could go up a little, it could go down a little, that's about the average.
All right, thank you, sir.
And Deb asked me to add in that State Department of Health has to also be notified when they apply for a data center and they'll, they'll be looking at all the health things too.
I'm just looking to see if anybody else wants to talk. Councilor Parker.
I just wanted to thank Attorney Callahan and Town Manager John Bird, Deb Jones and whoever else was involved in this process. I know it was a lot to do, handle and thank you. If you are trying to cover the town of Grattan the best way you can and I'm hoping that we can see this move forward. Thank you.
Any other councilors who wish to speak? We have, let's see, Council Malendez, Council Baumgartner and Council Zepary haven't spoken yet, if you'd like to speak before we, I think we're just about done.
Again, if you send me, send me any questions, I'll get it right back to you.
Okay, very good. I'd like to also echo what Council Parker has said and Council Obray as far as the work that Mr. Bird and Mr. Callahan have, have done to get the escalator provisions inserted so that we're covered for inflation and thank you very much for your work on this and hopefully it bodes well and things progress smoothly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Obray, this, this way, I'm sorry, this would be Council Obray's third time to speak. Is, or do we have six councilors who would like for Council Obray or for there to be a third round?
I doubt it.
Two? We have two councilors who would like a third round. Okay. All right. Council Baumgartner, you have a question, sir?
Uh, no questions, other than just like to echo your remarks on Mayor Granitowski and certainly Council Parker, just extending a thanks to Attorney Callahan and, and Mr. Bird for providing the information ahead of tomorrow, I'm sorry, next week's regular council meeting on this matter. And, but no, I just also informing folks note that I support letting folks speak for a third round of questions if they have more additional ones. Nothing further.
Thank you. Council Malendez, you have the floor. I can't hear you, Council Malendez, I'm sorry. Could you speak up, please?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to thank our staff for negotiating such a good contract. I know other towns had already signed contracts and then when, when our negotiation came out, they got our, our deal because it was, it was a better deal, so I want to thank them for that. I think this is good for Grattan and I will be supporting it. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Council Franco also wished to speak for a third time. Once again, we would need six people to allow a third round according to our rules. These are our rules, not my rules. So if you could raise your hand, please, if you would like a third round. One, two, three, four, five.
Mine's up, mine's up.
I see Franco, Baumgartner, Malendez, Obray and Boardland.
Come on, Joe.
My hand goes up in tribute to the way here.
All right, so we are on to a third round. So then I will note that Council Franco had her hand up and Council Obray had her hand up prior, so.
I would like to allow Council Obray, Obray to speak first, thank you.
Thank you. Just one second, please. Let me just make note of time and everything here. So Council Obray, you will have the floor right now, please, thank you.
The only thing I was going to ask is if you, maybe at the end of the meeting, would ask how many seem to be in favor? I know we're not voting, but it would be good to know where we're heading. Thank you. I yield the floor.
All right, Council Franco, you have the floor.
Thank you. So, so with this contract, and I know you've negotiated it, you've gone through it and are there, there concerns that you may have going forward if certain particular things happen with the town?
I think we're well-covered.
Excuse me?
I think we're very well-covered with this. I mean, Eric, Eric would have piped up if, Eric, do you, do you think of anything we're missing? I don't, I don't think so.
Oh, I, I mean, we spent a lot of time going through this with them and I don't think any other towns really put them through what we did, so.
All right, because I did, it's, I, my personal opinion is it's a big decision here. I want, I'm moving forward positively with this and from the things that I've read and the things that I'm hearing, I think there are answers to questions and it sounds like it's going to the best interest of the town. But I probably don't think of everything and that's, and that's the point is I'm, I'm just concerned that maybe other things could pop up that not all of us thought. I mean, just like, there's no kind of arbitration in there. And is that something that should go in there? Is that like part of a minutia? Or is that something that would be more of a, you know, a serious item that would be put in?
I've never been a big fan of the arbitration, then you're stuck with it, you know, I'd rather. I, I've tried to think every angle we could think of, we spent a ton of time, I'm very comfortable with this agreement.
All right, all right. Thank you very much and thanks for all your time. I know you've been working on this and it's been a lot and I appreciate it, I truly do. Thank you.
Here, we have a third round open here, guys. So anybody who's already spoken twice that would like to speak a third time, you may at this point. So councilors who have already spoken, you're welcome to have the floor for a third time if you'd like. I don't know if it's really appropriate to do a, any kind of straw poll or anything like that. But I think you've heard, if you've been listening to the conversation, you've heard people speaking and I think you have a sense of where everybody is as far as support or not support for the project. I haven't really, I've heard a lot of support from the councilors coming forward, so. All right, there's nothing else on the agenda, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Heed, seconded by Parker. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Zepary, any abstentions? So moved eight in favor, one opposed, Zepary, zero abstentions. We are adjourned at 7:22 PM.